Of abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, we thank you that your word is the lamp to our feet and the light to our path. As we review our study tonight, we pray that you will give us understanding. Help us to be diligent in the study of your word. And give us the wisdom to apply it to our everyday lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, we are studying Acts, chapter eleven. Acts, chapter eleven. Peter explains why and how he took the gospel to the Gentiles. Peter explains why and how he took the gospel. To the Gentiles, and I'm going to start by reading the first eighteen verses of Acts, chapter eleven. Now the apostles and brethren who were in Judea. Heard that the Gentiles that also received the word of God. And when Peter came up to Jerusalem. Those of the circumcision contended with him, saying. You went in to un-sacrifice men and ate with them. Well, Peter explained it to them in order from the beginning, saying. I was in the city of Joppa praying. And in a trance, I saw a vision. An object descending like a weight sheet. Let down from heaven by four corners. And it came to me. When I observed it intently and considered. I saw four-footed animals on the earth. Wild beasts, creeping things, and birds of the air. And I heard a voice say to me. Rise, Peter, kill and eat. But I said, not so, Lord. For nothing common or unclean as at any time entered my mouth. Were the voices answered me again from heaven? What God has cleansed, you must not call common. Now this was done three times. And all were drawn up again into heaven. At that very moment, three men stood before the house where I was. Having been sent to me from Caesarea. Then the Spirit told me to go with them, doubting nothing. Moreover, these six brethren accompanied me. And we entered the man's house. And he told us how he had seen an angel. Standing in his house. Who said to him, send men to Joppa. And call for Simon, whose surname is Peter. Who will tell you words. By which you and your household will be saved. And as I began to speak. The Holy Spirit fell upon them. As upon us at the beginning. Then I remembered the word of the Lord. How he said, John indeed baptized with water. But you shall be baptized with the Holy Spirit. If therefore God gave them the same gift as he gave us. When we believed on the Lord Jesus Christ. Who was I? That I could withstand God? When they had heard these things. They became silent. And they glorified God, saying. Then God has also granted to the Gentiles repentance to life. In our last study. We saw how God demonstrated to Peter, a Jew. That his plan of salvation included the Gentiles. No matter what the Jews might think of them. Cornelius, a Roman official. A Gentile who feared God with all his household. Was generous and was a man of prayer. Was directed in a vision to send for Peter. Who would tell him what to do. Meanwhile, God had prepared Peter in another vision. That the Jews were no longer to pour Gentiles unclean. The Holy Spirit led Peter to Cornelius' house in Caesarea. And after preaching to Cornelius and his household. The Holy Spirit fell upon them. And they spoke in tongues and were baptized. One would have thought that this would be good news to the believers in Jerusalem. But no. Those of the circumcision. Had an axe to grind with Peter. Those of the circumcision. Were Jewish Christians. Who continued to hold on to Jewish laws and traditions. They believed that the Gentiles had to keep the law of Moses. Observe other Jewish traditions. And be circumcised. Before they would become Christians. The Spirit shows us. That these Jews were upset. Not because the Gentiles were converted. But because Peter went into the home of the Gentiles. And even ate with them, thus breaking the Jewish law. Why would Peter do such a thing? They needed an explanation. They were not happy. That the Gentiles were considered equal with them in God's eyes. Simply because of their faith in Christ. But this is all that is needed. To be of right standing with God. Our righteousness does not depend on how we live. It is based on our faith in Christ. Ephesians two, eight to nine, Ephesians two, eight to nine says, quote. For by grace you have been saved through faith. That is faith in Jesus Christ. And that not of yourselves. It is the gift of God, not of works. That is, not what you do. Lest anyone should boast. Our righteousness is based on what Jesus did on the cross. Not on keeping the law. We have Peter's explanation in verses four to seventeen. His response to their criticism is found in these verses. He told them how he saw a vision. In which a sheet with all sorts of animals was let down from heaven. And how he heard a voice saying to him, rise, Peter, kill and eat. By the way, this is the second time this story is being told. In chapters ten and eleven. Why? Possibly because God wanted to show us. How important he considered what he was doing among the people was. But for the voice from heaven said. What God has cleansed must not be called common. Which meant that God's plan of salvation. Included both the Jews and the Gentiles. By repeating the vision. God was emphasizing. How necessary it was to free Peter. And indeed, all who were like him from their personal prejudices. Peter continued with how three men sent from Cornelius stood at his gate. After he had seen the vision. Then the Holy Spirit told him to follow them to Caesarea. And he did. There Cornelius recounted his own vision. And how the angel had asked him to send for Peter. As he began to speak to Cornelius and his household. The Holy Spirit fell on them. And they began to speak in tongues. Just as it happened to the disciples on the day of Pentecost. Then Peter added. Then I remembered the word of the Lord. Quote, John indeed baptized with water. But you shall be baptized with the Holy Spirit. Peter remembered the word of the Lord. The word of the Lord was his authority. So he went on and baptized them. It is important to always remember the word of God. And believe in the authority of the word. Especially when we face difficult situations in life. God's word assures us. Of his presence through periods of trouble. He knows our fears. And speaks words of comfort and promises to help. Isaiah forty-one, for example, in Isaiah forty-one. The word of the Lord says, yeah, fear not, for I am with you. Be not dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you. Yes, I will help you. I will uphold you with my righteous right hand. God's promises is deliverance from our enemies. For example, in. In Isaiah fifty-four, verse seventeen, which we always quote. He says, no weapon found against us shall prosper. And every tongue which rises against you in judgment, you shall condemn. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord. And their righteousness is of me, says the Lord. And of course, his word promises his guidance through life trials. An example is found in Isaiah forty-three, verse two. Where you pass through the waters, I will be with you. And through the rivers, they shall not overflow you. When you walk through the fire, you shall not be burned. Nor shall the flame scotch you. When we remember God's word. In our different situations. We become strengthened and encouraged in our faith and determination to face life's challenges. So Peter remembered the word of our Lord Jesus Christ in this situation. He concluded. If therefore God gave them the same gift. As he gave us when we believed on the Lord Jesus Christ. Who was I? That I could withstand God? Indeed, who was Peter to go against God? Who are we to stand against the work of God? Moreover, as if Peter was anticipating. That he might have problems with the Jews concerning his visit to Cornelius. He had taken six other brethren along with him to be his witnesses. That was the wisdom. And speaking about the six men. Acts ten, forty-five to forty-six says. And those of the circumcision who believed. Were astonished as many as came with Peter. Because the gift of the Holy Spirit had been poured on the Gentiles also. For they heard them speak with tongues and magnified God. Peter had no doubt. Given a full and satisfactory response. To the criticism of the Jewish Christians. Verse eighteen says, when they heard these things. They were silent. And they glorified God for opening the door of repentance to the Gentiles. Peter asked explanation, silenced all their objections. God had baptized the Gentiles and the Holy Spirit. With the evidence of speaking in tongues, just like he did for them. On the day of Pentecost. What other proof did they need? To accept the Gentiles' experience as authentic? Let's continue with the reading. Let's look at verses nineteen to twenty-six, Acts eleven, nineteen. Now those who were scattered after the persecution that arose over Stiphan. Traveled as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus, and Antioch. Preaching the word to no one but the Jews only. But some of them were men from Cyprus and Cyrene. Who, when they had come to Antioch. Spoke to the Hellenists, preaching the Lord Jesus. And the hand of the Lord was with them. And a great number believed and turned to the Lord. Then news of these things came to the ears of the church in Jerusalem. And they sent out Barnabas to go as far as Antioch. When he came and had seen the grace of God. He was glad and encouraged them. All with the purpose of that, that he encouraged them all that with purpose of heart. They should continue with the Lord. For he was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and of faith. And a great many people were added to the Lord. Then Barnabas departed for Tarsus to seek Saul. And when he had found him, he brought him to Antioch. So, so that for a whole year they assembled with the church. And taught a great many people. And the disciples were firstborn Christians in Antioch. After Peter had been able to convince the Jewish believers. With his explanation. Of how God had sent him to preach the gospel to the Gentiles. And how he had poured out the gift of the Holy Spirit upon them. Christianity exploded into Gentile areas. And many more Gentiles became believers. Some believers from Cyprus and Cyrene came to Antioch. And preached the gospel to the Gentiles there. And more and more people turned to the Lord. When the church in Jerusalem had the spread of God's word. They sent Barnabas. To Antioch to have the new church that had been born there. Barnabas lived up to the meaning of his name. Remember, his name means son of encouragement, Acts four, thirty-six. Barnabas means son of encouragement. No doubt Barnabas had the gift of encouragement. Which is one of the gifts of the Holy Spirit listed in Romans, chapter twelve, verse eight, Romans twelve, eight. In the New King James' Version. It is listed as exhortation, but it means the same thing. Oh, how the church meets people with that gift today. When Barnabas arrived. He saw the favor of God upon them. And encouraged them to be faithful and steadfast, even as he taught them. Taught the new believers the word of God. Verse twenty-four says this about Barnabas, quote. For he was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and of faith. Remember how he gently introduced Saul. To the believers in Jerusalem after his conversion. When they didn't want, when they didn't want to have anything to do with him. Because of how he had persecuted believers in the past. Barnabas became the bridge between Saul and the apostles. New Christians need people. Who will encourage them, who will teach them and introduce them. To other believers. And Barnabas gives us a good example. Of how mature Christians ought to treat new converts. We need to help them to grow in their faith. And personal relationship with Christ by teaching them. Our churches today needs to work more on disciplining our new converts. Seeing the massive growth of the church. Barnabas went to find Saul at Tarsus. And he brought him back with him to Antioch to join him. Together they stayed for a whole year in Antioch. Teaching and encouraging the new believers. It was at Antioch that believers were firstborn Christians. Up to this time, the followers of Christ called themselves believers. Those belonging to the way, saints, or the church. But the name Christians identified them with Christ. It was used to describe devoted servants and followers of Christ. Today, however. The word Christian has become a general name. Applied to anyone who claims to believe in Jesus. Unfortunately, many of us who answer to that name have little or nothing to show that we are Christ-like. Neither our words nor our actions show us to be who we claim to be. Let us strive to talk and walk in a way. That when the unbelievers see us, they can testify that these are indeed Christians. Let's look at the rest of the chapter. Verse twenty-seven. We read verses twenty-seven to thirty. And in these days prophets came from Jerusalem to Antioch. Then one of them named Agabus stood up. And showed by the Spirit that there was going to be a great famine throughout all the world. Which also happened in the days of Claudius Caesar. Then the disciples, each according to his ability. Determined to send relief to the brethren dwelling in Judea. This they also did and sent it to the elders by the hands of Barnabas and Paul. At which time some prophets came to Antioch from Jerusalem. One of them named Agabus. Under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit. Prophesied that there was going to be a great famine upon the world. That famine actually happened during the reign of Claudius Caesar. So the disciples decided to send relief to the brethren in Judea. Through Barnabas and Paul. Everyone giving as much as they could. This was a demonstration of faith and love. They were showing their faith by doing something for their fellow brethren, that is, by giving. The Bible says that faith without works is dead. James two, fourteen, James two, fourteen. They were motivated to give generously. Because they cared for other people's needs. No one was forcing them to give. They gave willingly and cheerfully, as Paul reminds us in 2 Corinthians nine, seven. Quote, so let everyone give as he proposes in his heart. Not grudgingly or of necessity. For God loves a cheerful giver. Paul and Barnabas were entrusted to take the gifts to the elders in Judea. The early church gave willingly. And cared for others. In Romans fifteen, twenty-five to twenty-six, Romans fifteen, twenty-five to twenty-six. Paul tells us. That he was taken the gifts contributed by the believers in Macedonia and Achaia. To believers in Jerusalem. This is what he states in verse twenty-six. For it pleased those from Macedonia and Achaia. To make a contribution for the poor among the saints. And for the poor among the saints in Jerusalem. Our churches today should do nothing less. We should find giving to others and caring for them a delight. Our God is a giver. And our responsibility to give is the response to God's generosity. When we give, we are giving to Christ. We are indeed selling Christ. Matthew twenty-five. Matthew. Twenty-five. Excuse me. Thirty-four to forty-five. This is talking about the Son of Man judging the nations. A son of man, of course, in Jesus Christ himself. From verse thirty-four. Then the king will say to those on his right hand. Come, you blessed of my father. Inherited the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world. For I was hungry and you gave me food. I was thirsty and you gave me drink. I was a stranger and you took me in. I was naked and you clothed me. I was sick and you visited me. I was in prison and you came to me. Then the righteous will answer them, saying, Lord. When did we see you hungry and feed you? Or thirsty and give you drink? When did we see you a stranger and take you in, or naked and clothed in? Or when did we see you sick or imprisoned and come to you? And the king will answer. And say to them assuredly, I say to you. Inasmuch as you did it to one of these, the least of these, my brethren, you did it to me. Then he will also say to those on the left. Depart from me, you curs. Into the everlasting fire prepare for the devil and his angels. For I was hungry and you gave me no food. I was thirsty, you gave me no drink. I was a stranger and you did not take me in naked, you did not clothe me, sick and imprisoned, you did not visit me. Then they will also answer him, saying, Lord. When did we see you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or naked, or sick, or imprisoned, and did not minister to you? Then he will answer them, saying assuredly. I say to you. Inasmuch as you did not do it to one of the least of these. You did not do it to me. Moreover, we have received so much from God. Freely you have received. Freely give. Matthew ten, eight. Freely you have received. Freely give. Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, we can never thank you enough for including us Gentiles. In your plan of salvation. And extending to us the same gift of the Holy Spirit as you gave to the Jews. Thank you for people like Barnabas, who is a good example to us of how we should help new converts to grow in their faith and relationship with Christ. Holy Spirit, endow us with the gift of encouragement and giving so that we can contribute effectively to the expansion of the work of your kingdom on earth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we study Acts of the Apostles, chapter twelve. Acts of the Apostles, chapter twelve, James murdered, Peter delivered, paroled, judged. Good night.